Welcome to the Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 City of Erie Planning Commission Meeting. A little roll call here. Mark Klecker, Chair, President. Rich?
Here.
Tony is not going to be here, I was told. Colin?
Here.
And Jason, I was told, was not going to be here. Everybody look at the minutes?
Yep.
Any problems? I didn't see any. Can I make a motion?
So moved. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Blighted property designation.
I was talking, sorry.
That's okay.
Have the teacher throw the pencil out here or something. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. In front of you today is a resolution for the Planning Commission's designation of blight on the list of properties. The majority of them are residential properties. I was just confirming with Jake. 602 East Eighth Streets, it's a church on the corner of Eighth and Ash that is potentially zoned as a commercial property. But other than that, for the most part, they're all residential properties that have been designated blighted by the Playa Property View Committee at various times throughout the process. But you know, the properties that the Redevelopment Authority at the current time is ready to take action on will, you know, with successful votes today, we would move these to the Redevelopment Authority meeting in May and then over to our Solicitor's Office immediately following that. So for condemnation action.
Sounds good.
All right.
Everybody look those over?
Yes. Looks good.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
I'll second it.
In favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Wayne Health and Wealth Equity.
Just give you a little intro on what you're going to be hearing about today from Hannah Moran, who's here from Build CDC about the plan. Y'all have approved or recommended to City Council four other neighborhood plans for adoption by the city. That was East Bayfront, Academy of Marvin Town, Buffalo Road, and then our West Bayfront. And the most similar plan to the ECAT plan that you'll hear about today is our West Bayfront Plan, which was done by, not by city staff, but by an outside organization alongside staff from the Planning Department to help guide that planning process. So you'll just, you'll be hearing a presentation today from Hannah. We won't be asking for a vote today, but we will be back in May to ask for that recommendation to Council for full adoption of the plan. Yeah, yeah. So I'll give it over to Hannah, who has all of the details on the plan. I thought I had something else to say, which I do now. I'm going to sit down.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you very much for having me here today.
Yep.
What you'll see in front of you is a presentation I put together to highlight why we started the development district, the work we've done so far, some of our planning, and then what we hope to accomplish in the future. I would like to show you the founding document on that first page there. So I know it's a little confusing to hear that I'm from Build CDC and this is an ECAT plan. So just to give a little bit of background, Daria Devlin, the first and former Executive Director of the Erie Center for Arts and Technology, is now the Director of Social Impact for the Hammond Health Foundation. And I am the former Marketing and Special Projects Coordinator at ECAT, and I now am the Project Manager of Build. So the two of us have formed a subsidiary of Hammond Health Foundation. It's a nonprofit community development corporation, and we will be doing a lot of the work in this neighborhood. So really, we're taking the work from ECAT with us to build, still working very closely in partnership with ECAT that has that trusted name recognition in the community. So it's a continuation of the team that we had to put this plan together. Another member of our team is Revell Showers. He works for Hammond Health Foundation and is currently at ECAT every day. He does a lot of our door-to-door outreach with the folks in the community and helps them very well. So after we decided that we needed to do a district plan, we formed a steering committee first and foremost with members of our neighborhood, so business owners, residents, and major community leaders. We did stakeholder interviews with folks across the city and the county to make sure that this is something that was needed for that neighborhood. And then we identified our boundaries, which you'll see there on that first page. They go from the Bayfront to Pennsylvania and then north to south from Sixth to 12th Street. We understand it's a very small quarter, but we want to be extremely intentional about making sure we could hit every single house, every single business in that space, and really leverage our initial investment in the ECAT Wayne Building that we renovated as ECAT and launch out from there. So on that second page, you'll see our methodology. We did a lot of community and public engagement. We talked to every person that we could who answered the door. We left flyers for them. We hosted four in-person community events during the planning stage of our neighborhood development plan. We shared information. We hosted events to really engage them and make sure that they were understanding our process.
Were they well attended?
They were well attended.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we had community dinners. We had a coffee and chat. We had a Halloween event with hundreds of members from our community and shared information about what we were hoping to accomplish. We also did a community survey that we went door-to-door with, and we got 40 responses from our neighbors from just that survey.
So not to put you on the spot, I'm curious, do you have any idea what percentage of your residents in the area you were able to engage with?
I mean, everyone was engaged with passively by the multitude of things we left on their doorstep. But we also talked to the Neighborhood Watch Group, which is about 30 to 40 members, multiple times about our plan. All the business owners are very well aware of our plan. Part of them are on the steering committee, so I don't have exact percentage from you of the neighbors.
That's fine. That was more scarce.
Yeah, and then we also hosted a months-long information session at the ECAT Wayne Building where we had information on the plan. And we had hundreds of people leave sticky notes and engage that way as well. So there are folks coming in and out of the ECAT building. Okay, and we also did a property condition survey, and we worked with the city on this. We integrated previous data and we updated by going door-to-door in every household to do some parcel information. So we surveyed over 400 parcels. So we really wanted to benchmark where we're at now in the district, and then once we leveraged that investment that we had in the ECAT Wayne Building into home repair to see how far we've come. We also did a lot of data analysis and collection with Alter. They were our consultants on this project, and they helped us put together the profile of the district that you have in front of you on page three. So you can see that the ECAT Wayne District is a little younger than the city of Erie, and we do a lot of youth programming at ECAT, and so we do see a lot of those youth. And there was a lot of narrative from our neighbors about engaging youth in the planning process, so potentially forming like a young residents of the community steering committee or get them involved in some of these projects moving forward. The median household income is also lower than the county average. We also see a higher number of folks living below the poverty line. And you can also see those neighborhood conditions for properties that we did survey. You can see that some of them are good to average. That still means they need repair and they do need some additional work done. Oh, thank you for pulling up our neighborhood plan on there. And then you can also see the commercial, industrial mixed-use properties. Many of them are in good condition, but there are quite a few, if you've driven on East Ave, you know that are vacant, abandoned, or could use some revitalization. Someone in there doing something good for the neighborhood.
Other than ECAT, which obviously the facility is amazing, what is, what are some of the anchor institutions in that space?
Yeah, absolutely. So in the ECAT Wayne Building, we have the UPMC Jameson School of Nursing. They're one of our anchor tenants, one of the first folks to move into that space. The United Way of Erie County is in there as well. PHN, Wayne Primary Care is in the building, and they were actually there when it was the Wayne School. They're a school-based health system that has been there for many years. But when we renovated the building, we rehabilitated a space for them, so they're much larger than they were. ECAT is there. Erie's Black Wall Street, Birth Route, which is a doula service for mothers in the neighborhood and beyond. The Blue Coats are in there as well. Shannon Pulliam with Shannon Paul Sports. Darling Pharmacy started with us, but they have since left, and we have a number of other institutions that come in and go and rent space. So Love Your Block has been in there a few times to use the space to talk to our neighbors and to do some surveying. And that's all the folks that are currently in the ECAT Wayne Building, but we are going to expand our campus. We were given the Wayne Baptist Church by the community leaders there, and so we'll be doing an expansion and bringing some more folks in based off of what the neighbors say that they would like to see in that space.
Awesome.
So you can see the findings and some of the action items that came from that neighborhood development plan based off all the surveying and the data collection that we did. We have three main focus areas, so creating pathways to whole homes. We saw that there is a great deal of need for home repair. A lot of our neighbors expressed that they would really like home repair. Love Your Block has been doing a lot of that work on porches and soups and with mailbox and numbers. But we'd like to be able to go into properties and do some of that work. That was what our neighbors had requested. The second focus area is supportive, inclusive, and creative entrepreneurship, so trying to bring some of the amazing ideas that we hear from our neighbors about wanting to start businesses into businesses on East Avenue and expand on some of the work we've already done with employability in the ECAT Wayne Building and with our own career development programs. And that final focus area is Imagine Our Way on East Ave. So really looking at East Ave holistically, what can we do to improve streetscaping? What can we do to revitalize that district and to bring more folks there, make it more walkable and more safe for our neighbors? So on that next page, we created the Neighborhood Development Plan. It is published. You've got a copy of that. That's up on the screen there. About 45 pages long, but feel free to look through that. And then we did form our nonprofit, Build, which was taking on a lot of this work. And Build itself has four key focus areas, and a lot of those focus areas will have initiatives and projects coming up or are in the process of being put together now that will support some of this work. So you can see the Build focus areas on the next page there. I want to just highlight some of these things and the projects that we have going on in that district neighborhood. So our first key focus area is Trusted Access to Healthcare. The UPMC Health Plan was putting in a neighborhood center on East Ave, and that will allow us to use that space to have telehealth appointments and to push in programming around food security and healthy living styles. We also are bringing the Ram Clinic. This is an incredible organization at East Ave, Tennessee, that pushes into communities all over the country. It's almost a military-like operation. They bring in semi-trucks and they bring in healthcare providers to offer free services in medical, dental, and vision to the neighborhood. So it's a weekend-long event. We heard from so many of our neighbors that needed glasses and they didn't have access to vision care, especially not in East Ave in that neighborhood. So you can make glasses right onsite at this Ram Clinic. They do it in a truck. It takes two hours, and then they're ready to go. So this was something we thought would be an amazing resource for that neighborhood particularly, and ECAT as a building has the capacity to do it, and Build has the capacity and operational capacity to put that on. And then finally, we host the annual Wayne Community Health Fair. We do this in partnership with the city for the 814 concerts, and it's a great event where a lot of our neighbors come out and get access to resources they otherwise wouldn't have access to in that community. That second area is Safe and Affordable Housing. So Build is the backbone entity for Housing First Erie's Permit Supportive Housing Scattered Site Plans, and we will be looking to rehabilitate some apartments and homes in this district to be used for permanent supportive housing, so attacking that first focus area of whole homes. We do hope to do healthy home repairs with our construction trade students, as I mentioned. In that third area, Career and Workforce Development, we will be doing some on-the-job training programs with our construction trade students and utilizing some of those properties, and then continuing to support ECAT's other workforce training programs and UPMC Jameson's School of Nursing. In that final, Thriving Communities, we will be doing that Wayne Campus Expansion that I mentioned. Also, last year, in response to our neighbors' request for fresh and healthy food, we started a Pay What You Can Market and a Farmer Coalition of Pay What You Can Markets around the city to infuse that neighborhood with locally grown, fresh produce. We have other food security projects in the works. We also will be hosting community events and continuing to act on our neighborhood development plan. So that was a lot of information for you on what we're doing and what we hope to achieve in that neighborhood, but we are well on our way, and we're very proud of our neighbors and their engagement and the work that, you know, ECAT and all of our other organizations continue to do.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions?
If you have any questions.
Yeah. Have you all looked at the EPA's Community Change Grant? I think it's up to $20 million for projects that generally would align with what you're looking at. That may be something, if you haven't yet, might be worth looking at. This looks great.
Thank you very much for that recommendation. Yeah, we hope that even the strength of having the plan adopted will help leverage some of those resources to this community.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're so welcome.
Jake, the zoning? Thank you.
So I provided a couple of handouts. It's a couple areas of the zoning ordinance that just kind of are in need of some minor updating to get in line with the current state standards. And I, this is specific to childcare. The other amendment is, well, I'm not really recommending any amendments right now, but these are a couple of functional areas. We've been talking about various updates to the zoning ordinance to get things kind of in line with current standards. And so the two areas that really kind of jump out at me from day-to-day practice are the childcare standards and the, and some of the group housing uses that we have, that we currently have listed. We had talked about this previously as far as group housing, possibly realigning some of these uses, maybe defining a couple of uses that right now don't have definitions in the book. Wanted to get this on everybody's radar screen for now to start looking at. I'm not expecting any action today. None of these rec, haven't really refined any recommendations. But on the childcare, preliminarily, I guess my suggestion would be the state, a couple of years ago, sort of set up three categories of childcare. One is a family, family childcare home, which is anywhere from four to six kids in the house, in a house, in a residence. We've always been in line with that. We've had a family daycare home listed in the zoning ordinance for years. The other daycare or childcare classification that we've always had in the ordinance is daycare centers, which lines up with what the state's definition is. However, a few years ago, the state created this group childcare home, which is six to 12 kids. And we've never had a classification that lines up with that. In fact, the home childcare classification that we've had in the zoning ordinance, the state doesn't even recognize less than four kids as a childcare operation. So we have a choice. We can leave that as-is, which, when you look at the permitted zoning districts at home childcare, it's listed in several districts. So the question would be there, do we even, should we even list it as a childcare operation? The state doesn't recognize it. You know, one recommendation would possibly be eliminate it from the zoning ordinance, this home childcare designation. However, I do think we need to treat this group childcare home, which is this six to 12 kids. It's currently a gap in our ordinance. We don't have it listed. We've been treating most of these in, well, pretty much all the in-home daycares that have been getting registered since we started a daycare licensing program a couple of years ago as family in-home daycares. So if you were not operating an in-home daycare where the primary use of the property is a residence, if you were using, trying to use a commercial property, for instance, then it would be classified as a daycare center, and you would have to follow the appropriate zoning for daycare centers. And as you can see, the daycare centers are permitted now in all of the commercial districts, in the residential limited business district, and also as a special exception in R3, which special exception uses are, they basically go in front of the zoning hearing board for approval, but there's no, there's nothing special about them. As long as they meet the operational conditions in the zoning ordinance, the zoning hearing board's obligated to approve them. So one consideration might be for daycare centers, do we want to remove that special exception designation and perhaps allow that as a permitted use in R3? That's something to think about. I don't really, I don't have a strong feeling on that either way.
I think it probably goes more towards just our general overview, more shift towards that form-based and kind of avoiding the special exceptions where possible. I mean, if it's a rubber stamp effectively, it's just more paperwork we're creating, not necessarily improving or challenging anything.
Right, and that's, and that's when we start looking at the entire ordinance holistically, I think those are the things that are worth looking at, which is, there's a lot of, I think a lot of newer ordinances are moving away from special exceptions as a use category because of what you just said. It's essentially a lot of administrative action, and you make the applicant go through several steps to get approval, when in essence, as long as you put, as long as you have conditions, operational conditions in your ordinance, special exceptions really aren't terribly necessary. Unless you want, unless there's a use where you feel that it should be in more of a public forum, because a zoning hearing board hearing does provide a more public forum, so to speak. There's testimony provided, adjacent property owners are notified, that kind of thing. But it, but it probably should be reserved for special cases and not, you know, the city's ordinance does have a lot of special exception uses listed. And that's probably one of the areas, I think, functionally, we should look at when we're updating the entire ordinance. But that's, that's a thought for relating to daycare. So on the, on the group childcare home, that, you know, my recommendation is we add it to the zoning ordinance as a use and a definition to match the state. Then we kind of have to look at, okay, well, where do we want to permit that? Do we want to allow that in all the same districts that we allow the family home? It's just, it's a larger number of children, but essentially is the same setup. We might want to modify the definitions to indicate that if it is in-home, because the state's definition says it can be either in a residence or at another premises. Now, how we would look at that now is if it's not in a residence, we would consider it a daycare center.
We don't have any use.
It's a little, it's a little confusing how the state did this, this either-or for that category. But I guess the real limit at the state's standpoint is that you can't have more than 12 kids. You know, versus a daycare center, you might have, depending on the size of the daycare center, you know, dozens and dozens of kids. So that's the other consideration is, do we want to perhaps think about limiting that or allowing it in the same districts as family daycare home, but with that caveat that that would only apply for residential, you know, where the primary use of the property is a residence? So that, that's, I know that's not completely all written out, but that's why I wanted to have this conversation and get your thoughts moving forward, you know, craft some final language. So that, that's where we're at with the, with the childcare. Again, I'm not asking for any action today, but I think as, you know, as you guys have a chance to digest this a little bit further, I welcome your comments and suggestions, you know, contact me by phone or email, and, you know, maybe by next month then we'll, you know, we'll put some final recommendations together and, and group some of these together to get in front of council.
Again, not to put you on the spot, do we have any idea how many or if there are any facilities that would, that are currently, the way it's currently set up in our ordinance, that would kind of be out of bounds with the state's definition of it?
No, I think.
There's nothing being impacted. It's cleaning up language primarily?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I know we have, it seems to me from all the registrations that we've been doing since we started the daycare licensing program a couple of years ago, most of the in-home daycares, a few of them, maybe a third of them are looking at the family level, and it's probably because they have a relatively small home. And, and that being said, that's going to be a limiting factor because the state licenses these daycares. So we inspect them and the state inspects them, the properties. So I mean, if a property literally can't hold that many kids, they're not going to get approved for up to 12 kids. So, but what I've seen and heard is that, you know, most of the folks that have been registering over the last couple of years are, are interested in the group of having up to 12 kids. And they, you know, obviously have to pass all those inspections and get the license before they'd be allowed to do that. So most of the properties that I've seen, they're, they're able to support it. And daycare centers, like I said, we've been, we've been in line for many, many years. Shifting gears over into the group housing, are really the, the most relevant recommendation at this point is that we have group homes listed in the, in the ordinance, and in the residential districts, group homes are listed as special exceptions for R1, R1A, and R2. Now, that being said, the, according to the law, the Fair Housing Act, group homes are supposed to be treated like a single-family dwelling. So they should be allowed, should be permitted in every district that a single-family dwelling is permitted. So having it listed as a special exception is, is again, making people jump through hoops that they probably legally should not be required to jump through. So the easiest recommendation on this end is to move those group homes from special exception uses to permitted uses in all of the residential districts. So that's kind of a no-brainer. We definitely want to formalize that recommendation. On the other side, you know, you'll see that I listed quite a few different sort of group housing terms that we have in the ordinance, and some of them are similar. There's a couple that are very similar as far as the group residence facility and the group care facility. They're both more commercial in nature, but one is sort of kind of everybody. It's not age delineated, and then the other is age delineated for, for children and for elderly. I don't know whether that's necessary to make that distinguishment or not. I mean, I think that, again, going back to the holistic view, we want to simplify the ordinance. And I think we want to simplify, we may want to simplify some of these categories, but then again, we may want to, there may be a couple of things missing. Because I know we had talked about maybe transitional housing, things like shelters.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
And that's not in here right now. So there's a couple of things in both senses, maybe simplify and consolidate in some respects, but then there might be a couple of uses that we want to add related to group housing. So I wanted to get kind of what's in the book now in front of you to, so we, you can start to get a feel for that. And that's an area, I certainly don't have a lot of expertise in, in the group housing arena, you know, both as far as assisted living and, and, and things of that nature. So I don't know what might make the most sense at this point, but it seems like an area where we could do some cleaning up and, and make the ordinance better.
I think the other thing too is, depending on how you want to read some of these definitions, I mean, you're, what's the difference between, you know, obviously the difference being the kitchen and the bathroom for a multi-family, you know, housing unit versus, you know, seven people? You're starting to get a bit of overlap there, and then you can bring in just the topic of, you know, accessory dwelling units, whether or not those should be allowed as part of this transitional housing. So I think that this is probably, there's a lot we can do with this, but I mean, I think there's definitely, definitely plenty of discussion to be had here.
Yeah, and I, and I think we can, I think we can add the accessory dwelling unit, kind of throw that into this conversation. There, there are certain setups of buildings. There's many residences that are kind of set up as a flat, but they're technically, they're still integrated on the inside of the home, so you can go from upstairs to downstairs from the inside. So from that standpoint, it's a single-family dwelling, but you could very easily have an accessory dwelling unit that's not necessarily called that, but it's, it's a separate living unit within the house.
A carriage house above it, for example.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes. It's, it's when you have separate buildings that it becomes a little bit more convoluted because we would consider that multiple dwellings, which isn't permitted in residential districts. So I think that, you know, that's one area that we want to look further into. The, the one thing that I didn't really bring up in these, I threw, you know, I, you can see that what the definition of family is. And right now in the city, we have a limit of unrelated people living in a, living in a house at three. I've looked at some of the other municipalities, and three isn't an uncommon number. It's fairly common, but four is also a very common number. I would throw out there that, being that the city is, is a college town, and most of the time when kids get out of school, they tend to pair up when they're looking for a place to finish school out, when they get out of the dorms. Four probably is a much more reasonable number because you get two groups of kids, hey, let's get a house together. You have four kids. We've had a lot, over the years, had lots of folks call and say, hey, you know, this is a four-bedroom house, you know, looking at potentially having it, you know, for student housing. housing, and so it does come up sometimes. It's like, well, you know, the limit is three unrelated.
What is the historical context for that? I mean, I suspect I have an inkling, but I mean, it, it, there's nothing in recent history that led to three being the number?
No, not, not that I'm aware of. It's, you know, I, most of the language in the book is, the last time this book was really overhauled was 2000. The 2005 ordinance that we operate under, as amended, was pretty much the 2000 book, with some, obviously some updates, but, and we've been updating to accommodate sort of new trends and things like that over the past, you know, 15, 20 years. But as far as I know, it's, that three has been in there for a long time, and I don't really know what the basis of it was. You know, again, from a fair housing standpoint, students, elderly, disabled, they're all treated the same. You know, demographics do not matter when it comes to occupancy of a house. So I know that, you know, you can get complaints from the neighbors, oh, the students, there's too many kids living there, they're having parties all the time, but you can't discriminate because of somebody's student status. So I think we want to be more accommodating to have kids, you know, be able to find a house when they get out of the dorms and not have to literally leave the city to do that. Makes the properties more rentable, more saleable. I think it would be, I think it would be a good thing for the city. So that's something, I know we haven't discussed that much, but, but it seems to me that would be a pretty easy fix too. So those are some of my preliminary comments I have for those two areas. I know we have more to discuss, and, you know, I'll be adding more information as I, as I do some more research as time allows. And again, I welcome your, your comments and suggestions moving forward, and we'll keep working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and Neighborhood Resources update.
Good afternoon. I thought I'd give you an update mostly on the 12th Street, 12th Street Reimagine Project, since we're well underway. In front of you, I passed out our market card engagement activity. So we had our first engagement public event on March 27th at the Prep Pagerty Event Center. We had nearly 70 people attend, which was great. Yeah, we had business owners, neighborhood groups, activists, interested residents. It was a really good group. During that, during that activity, we did a, what's called a market card activity that was led by one of the consultants that have been hired, Fourth Economy. It was designed really to facilitate a discussion on various development options through a scoring system of one to five, one being the least, five being the most desired. And it really helped to discuss and prioritize different types of businesses, improvements for the corridor. As you can see in the information that I provided, the overall averages by category, really there was a real desire to improve the quality of, quality of place, bike lanes, tree plantings, and overall aesthetics of the, of the, of 12th Street. And just as a reminder, this, this corridor, we're only looking at it from Cherry to the Bayfront. So originally it was a little bit longer study area, but that was shortened. So as you go through, you'll see some of the desires and interests of this, of the, of the residents and business owners, community members, and then the overall community prioritizations, with quality of space being the most, the most, the highest priority, food and entertainment being in high demand for diverse and quality culinary experiences along, alongside engaging entertainment options, innovation and entrepreneurship and sustainability, and then goods and services was ranking a little bit lower, but still a desirable outcome for health and wellness category. So it was, this was a great activity. The consultants were able to gather this information and then they summarized it in, in this report, and then used this input for the alternatives that they plan to present at the Mini Charette on May 21st. It's an evening activity, so we tried to switch it up a little bit for those that are working during the day. But I wanted to ask, that's the same day as the next planning commission meeting, and I'd like to ask if you would like to do a working session either before or after your meeting to meet with the consultants. They can outline some of the renderings or even show you some of the concepts and alternatives that have come from the community input, and just simply present some of the findings to you. If you would be interested in that, then we can set that up.
Is the administration going to cancel at last minute?
I hope not.
Yeah.
Do you, do you find, would you, would that be of interest to you? And I'm happy to set that up with Jake. Okay.
As part of our regular meeting, or?
I would say that if, I, I suggested as a working session, maybe like an hour before, we could sit down our hour to hour and a half, I think an hour would be enough time.
Okay.
And then have your regular meeting after that. That way there can be more interaction, maybe discussion.
Sure. I'm curious, do, do you have, I guess, like the deep, more detailed results, like how they've bifurcated some of this by different demographic groups? Do we have that type of insight too? So understanding, you know, certain generations prioritize health and wellness above, you know, sustainability, that's some of those details.
Sure. It's a good question. So not this, this, this activity, the demographics were not asked. It was simply a visioning activity. However, at the Charette, and also we plan to have, engage the youth at Strong Vincent, and they don't know this yet, but at Prep, because many students cross over 12th Street to go to the Prep Pagerty Event Center. So we plan to, to engage the youth there. We also, the, the consultants are also working, sorry, interviewing separately businesses, Sisters of St. Joseph, our West Bayfront, and then multiple business owners along the corridor and even downtown to gain input. So, yeah, there is more than just this, this market activity going on. And we will be present, will be present with many of those interviews with the businesses, so we can also gain some knowledge in terms of what the, what local businesses are desiring, not only for the corridor, but also for downtown. So I'll make sure to set up with Jake a working session, probably prior to the meeting, I think that, does that sound okay? Prior to the meeting at maybe from 11 to, or from maybe 11 to 12, or do you want to do, we could do a working lunch? I don't know what.
No, I mean, I, we can work out the details with, see what their schedule looks like-
Our meetings at 1:00.
-if they're coming in town.
Why wouldn't we just go from 12:01?
I'm gonna do that, I mean, tentatively, but yeah, let's check and see what their schedule can accomplish.
Okay.
As possible.
Okay, we can work that out, sure.
I'm curious, is this market card, card, excuse me, activity, is there a way that this can be scaled online almost to the broader section of the community? I mean, 70 is fantastic engagement, especially for Erie things.
It was, yeah.
That's awesome. I would be curious just, I mean, this is great information to understand on, you know, even broader scale if possible. Is that, I guess I'm asking more from a technical feasibility, is this something that can be put online, or does it really require that in-person engagement to, to get through it?
So I think with any kind of engagement, I mean, yes, yes, you could, you could-
I'm thinking in the context like the, the streets or the, the transportation plan, where that, yeah, that was online. I thought that was great, I agree, able to go through it. Is this something similar that could be?
I think the discussion at the tables was very valuable, because, you know, we would pull up a, a specific card, and it might have said movie theater, several things having to do with like, you know, entertainment. And then we'd have a discussion about it and how that might, how it might seem in terms of a transportation viewpoint or connection with the neighbor, you know, north and south neighborhoods. So that was helpful to have a discussion points around it, but you certainly could do something like that through more of a survey, which we do have a survey online. All of this information is on our landing page on the city's website. So the, you'll find the survey, the market, markets, activity results, you'll find a survey if you weren't able to attend on the landing page on the website. But I do think that the, the discussion is very valuable, and anytime that you're doing engagement, it helps to bounce ideas back. So at the Mini Charette evening event, it will, I think it will be more, more of the same type of discussion. But, yeah. Just, just let me check. I'm just looking at the agenda. Next week, we plan to have a, the steering committee meeting for this project, and then we're gonna, and we're gonna do a walkthrough of the project area. So the, the project end date is the end of June, so it, like, like you already know, it is an aggressive schedule, and it's, so far it's going pretty smoothly, so. I can give you some other updates or answer any of the questions about some of the other projects, but I was, I can save that for next time also.
What, what was the original corridor that was going to be considered?
The original corridor, it might have been SASEFRAS, or, or, state, state to Bayfront.
State to the-
Yeah. But this came up during the, the first public engagement, and people asked, well, why, you know, it seems more logical that you would include all of that, especially because it's the gateway into downtown.
Yeah.
But there was, there was a very good comment that there is investment already going on from Cherry to downtown, large investment being made there. And so it makes sense to focus on the area that really is in need, which is the Cherry to the Bayfront. That being said, I just spoke with the consultant yesterday, and I said, we should make sure that we include those business owners east of Cherry, you know, to make sure that we gather their input as well, so, and engage, engage them as well into the plan, because they are part of the corridor as well.
Yeah, I mean, it, I'll, I'll grant you, there's investments certainly going on east of Cherry, but that, that corridor needs consideration and improvement, just like the balance of it does, I mean.
Sure.
I think it's obviously, you know, I think piggybacking off of that, making sure that while there may be different activities that we, it's been broken up, they've got to be one cohesive vision.
Yeah.
You shouldn't be able to drive down the street and be able to tell exactly where that planning ended. Like you go drive, you know, west in the middle of winter weather, snowing, and you hit Pittsburgh Avenue, you can tell you're not in, you know, Erie anymore. Like there's, you shouldn't, we shouldn't be able to see those things. Now, this isn't a, Chris isn't writing more, just I think to what you're saying, yes, there's investment going on, yes, this is focusing on the areas that there's less investment, but when we bring it all together, obviously we want to make sure that it's one cohesive vision.
Of course. As a transportation study, which it is still a transportation study as well, yes, we're looking at it holistically as a corridor. I think in terms of the land use and economic development, that was more of a focus on those parcels that are underutilized on that side of the corridor. So I think that's where, so that's when the, the study area shrunk, is when the, looking at it from the land use perspective, not, not aesthetics, not street lighting, not bike lanes, not transportation, that is a, is all encompassing of 12th Street, so. Okay.
Thank you.
And next time I'll, I'll give you an update of some of the other projects that we have in motion, so more comprehensively, but this is kind of the focus I wanted to, I hope you can make it to the, to either our working session or to the evening event on the 21st. We, we hope to have some more elected officials there, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
I just want to say thank you to the planning commission and for all the work that they're doing with that 12th Street. I went to that 12th Street imagining, and what was nice was the people at my table were all new to me, and so I met some business owners, and I met some young men, engineers who are working on different projects or whatever in the city, I think they said they were. But it was good working together and discussing and bringing up new ideas and getting different mindsets, because, you know, I've been in Erie my whole life, I'm in my 60s, but at the table that we were at, we were all diverse and everything, so that was good. Public input is very important, and I do like the fact that it would be nice to have it start at State Street and then continue on to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.